Stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the public for which it stands, my nation and God indivisal.
Let them receive justice for us.
Roll call.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
Yeah.
Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Item two, up people on the agenda. Commissioners, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Make motion. Pass the agenda as presented.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Simmons. Did you have something you wanted to add?
This, uh, this consent agenda, can we talk about them individually?
When we get down there.
Okay, thanks.
Do you want to add anything to this agenda?
No, if we can talk about each one of those individually.
We have Commissioner Scott. Did somebody support that?
I'll support it.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie to approve the agenda as, as stated. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item three, Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. Uh, every commissioner present shall vote when every question is called by the chairperson. No member shall present, shall abstain from voting yes or no unless excused by a majority of those present. Is there any declaration of conflicts of interest, commissioners?
I have none.
I have none.
Not at all.
Item four, Review of Minutes. We have September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I've read the minutes and I'll make a motion to approve them as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item four B, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, Regular Meeting Minutes.
I've read the minutes and I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
Motion from Commissioner Scott.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any discussion? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries item four C, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, Closed Session Meeting Minutes. Those were all placed at our chairs when we got here. Did everybody get an opportunity to read those?
I've read mine and turned it in and I'll make a motion to uh, accept them as presented.
Motion, motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries item four D, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Wiltie, support from Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries item four E, September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I've read the minutes and I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
A motion from Commissioner Scott.
I was like.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Item four F, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
I've read the minutes and I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
Motion from Commissioner Scott.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Item five, Public Comment and Agenda Items Only. Rules for this. This is for agenda items only for public comment. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson when speaking. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any public comment in the room on agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone? Item six, Correspondence. We received correspondence from Atinaguen County,
Cool.
Asiola County, Santa Lake County, St. Clair County, Tuscola County. Those have all been received and filed. Item seven, Consent Agenda. I believe Commissioner Simmons stated she wanted to take each one of these individually, so we will move forward. Item seven A, Resolution to Approve Animal Shelter Service Agreement. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. On May twenty-second, nineteen seventy-five, the Oglema County Board of Commissioners approved the Oglema County Dog Ordinance Pursuit to the Dog Law of nineteen nineteen. The ordinance requires that the county shall provide for an adequate pound to be maintained by the dog warden or other designated persons to shelter animals that come into the possession of the county. Ray Family Animal Shelter is a Michigan nonprofit corporation qualified to perform and provide necessary animal sheltering services. Approval of this resolution will authorize execution of an agreement with Ray Family Animal Shelter to house up to fifty dogs per year at an amount not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars and a flat rate of fifty dollars for each dog in excess of fifty.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as.
Motion from Commissioner Scott.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any discussion? Last year, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Uh, I didn't, I have not read before I got here to read this whole contract. Is there, uh, thing there about that they will sell dog licenses at the shelter too and they get to keep like a dollar and we get the rest of it? I think there was one, something like that was there.
It's, it's not in this contract, but it is, uh, in a separate, uh, motion and maybe even an agreement, uh, through the treasurer's office to allow that.
Okay. Yes, okay. Thank you.
We, we have not exceeded fifty, correct?
No, we haven't.
I think we. I think so.
We have?
Yes. We're currently at sixty and currently.
Yes.
And we did claims.
We did our claims and then we're at sixteen. Yes, that's why I said yes.
So after fifty, it's fifty dollars for each dog?
Yes.
Correct.
So it could be more than seventy-five hundred dollars in excess of fifty. So we're obviously going, I thought that when we just talked about this last week, I had asked if we had exceeded that. So we, I guess I want to make sure that we're cost-wise.
Be sixty.
Come on up.
Three hundred dollars.
Come on up, under sheriff. I'm sure we're gonna be talking tonight.
Sure. So currently, the contracts are seventy-five hundred. We didn't start paying until November, so we had that one month, uh, in October where it wasn't covered. The six twenty-five is the monthly installment. Every dog over fifty is that fifty dollars additional.
Yep.
Uh, we are currently through August, we were at sixty. Um, so we have a month of September to go, which is the monthly installment of six twenty-five plus any overages that we might have. So last month, it was three dogs that we were charged for. When we look at our current budget situation, uh, the minimum over budget we will be for the fiscal year will be six. Whoop. One second. Six twenty-five, so six fifteen. That would be if there were no additional dogs. So.
And what was budgeted last year?
Seventy-five hundred was the flat fee. We didn't budget for the additional dogs. So this coming year, we have ten thousand budgeted in that line item, which takes into account seventy-five hundred from the contract, some overages that we may encounter with dogs over fifty, the contractual thing. When I was talking to Scott when we initially set up the contract, um, he hadn't had a year previously that had been over fifty. But with coming out of COVID, he said him and a lot of his counterparts have all experienced that coming out that a lot of dogs it's up across the board in other counties also, but they're seeing uptick in dogs being turned in on this other side of it. So this is not unusual for us. With the next one, ten thousand, I think we should be well within our means, especially with some of the additional revenue we've identified in animal control.
Questions?
So you budgeted ten thousand for this current budget?
The current proposed budget includes ten thousand for this line item, which will cover the seventy-five hundred plus any overages.
Addition.
Over fifty again. And so we've identified some additional revenue in the animal control, but we'll offset those costs. In our best to accomplish that. The manager of the shelter is happy. Scott's been happy for the most part. There's been some growing pains as far as the management of how that operation works, but overall, it's been successful for us. And, uh, the only, the only input I don't have is from actually their board. I don't have any input from actual shelter board itself, so we approved this contract. I'll make sure it gets to their board, but they have any feedback, or so I'll bring it back.
No, this is probably good news. Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thanks, Bill.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig.
Yes.
Item seven, the Resolution to Accept U.S. Department of Agricultural Community Facilities Program Grants. This resolution is sponsored by Planning and Zoning Administrator Ryan Veder. In order to achieve the state's a hundred percent carbon neutrality goal for twenty fifty, the governor has proposed that the Michigan Public Service Commission be the sole regulating authority for solar and wind projects by expedite these efforts. By granting the Michigan Public Service Commission this authority, local control would be preempted, meaning counties, township, cities, and villages would be unable to determine the location, size, setback distance, decibel level, or any other criteria for a solar or wind facility. Approval of this resolution would allow, would add Oglema County to a growing list of Michigan municipalities that oppose preemption of local control and solar and wind setting, citing and zoning.
You're, you're reading, uh, you're reading.
Oh, gosh.
Descriptions for C.
I am.
For B.
I am, you're correct. So that was seven C, Resolution.
Well, you want to, you want to take the, have one first.
Seven B, okay, commission. Seven, that was seven C, Resolution to Oppose Legislation to Preempt Local Control of Solar and Wind Developments.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution to oppose the legislation.
A motion from Commissioner Scott. I'll support that.
Now that it's fully understood.
Is there any further discussion? This does not, uh, include money, so, uh, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries item seven B, Resolution to Accept U.S. Department of Agricultural Community Facilities Program Grants. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. On March second, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty-three dash thirty to authorize the application for U.S. Department of Agricultural Community Facilities Program Grant Funds for Purchase Detective Vehicle and a Patrol Vehicle. On September seventh, twenty twenty-three, the county received notification that the grant requests were approved. Approval of the resolution will authorize acceptance of grant funds for purchase of a defect detective vehicle at a cost not to exceed sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and a patrol vehicle costing sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Under Grant Program Guidelines, award funds may remain obligated but unliquidated for up to three years.
I'll make the motion. Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to accept, uh, the resolution, Department of Agriculture, Community Facilities Program Grants.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiltie.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Discussion?
Yeah, where did, where did you read the three years? I didn't see that. I'm sorry.
Under, uh, it's the very last, but unliquidated for up to three years. So that means we can receive this grant, keep it for three years, but we don't have to use it. We can return it.
As long as we're not approving right now to purchase a vehicle, but we're just accepting the grant to use it in case we want to buy a vehicle.
Correct.
I don't want to buy a vehicle now. We don't have any money. Okay.
I got it.
Go ahead, Commissioner Scott.
Uh, are we, uh, it was in the, in the grant application for specifically those vehicles?
It was.
So then we were, were held to those vehicles.
I don't know how flexible USDA is about that, but, uh, the grant was submitted and their matches, matching amounts were based on the vehicles that were submitted, which are the two that you see here.
Okay, if you could check to see if they have flexibility, because three years down the road, we may not need that particular item. I don't want to be held have some leniency.
Come on up, under sheriff.
Would you like to have some leniency and not go through years?
You have. If you remember the last USC, there is some leniency as far as the specific vehicle.
Okay.
Because we experienced that with the towels. The original USDA, if you remember, the last ones were for explorers. But because of what was going on in the car market with my deal, we got switched to towels because the towels were cheaper. And so there are flexibilities as far as that.
I'm, I'm, I'm concentrating on the use.
Yep.
Right now, you know.
Yep. So I mean, two years from now, it's going to be a different market than right now if we.
Well, it might be a different need.
That could be too, yeah.
Yeah. I just want that flexibility.
Yep.
Again, we're receiving this. We're not necessarily utilizing these grants, correct?
Correct. This right now, we're just accepting it. We have a three-year period to put together depending on how things work out to get these vehicles to replace and use in our fleet.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So all these.
Got to sit in a car roll.
Pardon me?
Chairman.
So we have to approve this before they can purchase anything.
Before they can.
Request for a purchase, right? We, we, we approved the request for the purchase.
What we, all we're doing right now, we're not approving that.
Understand.
Purchase. We're, we're approving the grant.
I understand that.
That's it.
I just want to make sure that, you know what I'm talking about.
That's it, Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? Uh, roll call vote.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Item seventy, Resolution to Approve Agreement for Extension Services. This resolution is sponsored by MSU Extension Director Julie Darden. It is a mission of MSU Extension to help prove, to help people improve their lives through an educational process that applies knowledge to critical issues, needs, and opportunities. MSU Extension meets this mission by providing extension educational programs in agricultural and agro-business, children and youth development, including four H, health and nutrition, and community food and environment. Approval of the resolution will authorize an agreement with MSU Extension to provide a service to Oglema County residents for fiscal year twenty twenty-four at a cost not to exceed eighty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Subject to a modification at the bottom of section B dot three to preserve employment rights of the board.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, resolution to approve the agreement for the extension services.
We have a motion from Commissioner Wiltie.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Scott. Any discussion?
For sure, you'd want a second at least.
Commissioner Simmons.
I understand that this wasn't coming out of a general fund, is that correct?
Right, it's comes out of the MSU millage fund.
Okay.
All of it is covered through the millage. Any further discussion? This does not impact us. Roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Item seventy, Resolution to Approve Abuse Prevention Policy. This resolution is sponsored by Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. Oglema County seeks to create a welcoming and nurturing environment and has zero tolerance for those whose actions may jeopardize the safety, health, and innocence of a minor. Adoption of an abuse prevention policy is strongly encouraged by the county liability insurance carrier. Approval of the resolution will establish a formal abuse prevention policy with immediate effect.
Make the motion to approve the resolution.
Motion, Commissioner Scott.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Discussion? Did this, uh, after our Committee of the Hold, did this go through approval from the judge?
Did, uh, through the judge and through the insurance carrier with the changes that the judge requested.
And everybody was on the same page?
They were.
And the changes I'm read.
They are.
Thank you, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item seven F, Resolution to Approve Masters Pharmaceutical Settlement Settlement Participation Agreement. This resolution is sponsored by Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. Oglema County, along with approximately four thousand local government governments across the nation, filed a lawsuit to address the public nuisance that is the opiate epidemic. Defendants in the Masters Pharmaceutical Lawsuit negotiated a proposed settlement agreement with the plaintiff's designated negotiation committee. The proposed settlement contains monetary, money, oh, monetary relief, including roughly seven hundred and seventy-five dollars earned marked by Oglema County. Approval of the resolution will authorize execution of the proposed settlement agreements.
Vote to approve the resolutions.
Second.
A motion, Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Simmons. Discussion? No, this doesn't say where we're putting the seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. We're just, we're just, we're just, um, accepting it, correct?
Accepting it. Typically, these will be wired in and the treasurer will very likely put it into the opioid fund unless you direct otherwise. I do want to emphasize, the amount is seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's a three-digit number.
Correct.
Doesn't have any zeros behind it, right?
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item seventy, seventy, Resolution to Appoint a Parks and Recreation Commission Member. This resolution is sponsored by the Parks and Recreation Commission. The Board of Commissioners established a Parks and Recreation Commission under the County and Regional Parks Act. Danny Johnson of Prescott has agreed to serve as an at-large member of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Approval of the resolution will appoint Danny Johnson to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. December thirty-first. Is that right? That's not a very long term.
It's the remainder.
Of the term.
December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, there are, um, prescribed terms in the statute and they have to be rotated, so it's important to maintain those, those terms.
So in January, we'll renominate them. Or December even.
Hey, any.
I'll make a motion to, to appoint, happily make a motion to appoint.
A second.
Support.
Or something.
Motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Simmons. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries item seven H, Resolution to Prove a Contact to Provide Indigent Counsel. This resolution is sponsored by the Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. The Oglema County Thirty Fourth Circuit Court, Family Divisions, and the Oglema County Probate Court by statute and constitution must provide legal counsel for indigent, indigent individuals who are economically unable to obtain legal representation. Approval of the proposed resolution will authorize an agreement with six local attorneys to provide such services at a cost not to exceed a hundred and fifteen thousand, eighty dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Make the motion to approve the resolution.
Motion with Commissioner Scott.
Second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Item seven I, Resolution to Approve Annual Compensation Rates for Nonjudicial Countywide Electred Officials. This resolution is sponsored by County Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. The County Board of Commissioners Act assigns to the board authority to prescribe the fix and to prescribe and fixes salaries and compensation of employees of the county if not fixed by law. The proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget provides for an increase in salary for nonjudicial countywide elected officials of two percent. This increase is consistent with the approval of the non-union employees in the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The resolution also extends employment benefits to these officials as provided to non-union county employees.
I'll make the res, uh, make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Simmons. Discussion?
This is just for the elected officials. Am I correct?
Correct. It's a two percent pay increase.
Okay.
Employment benefits. They receive those now. That's nothing new, correct?
Correct.
What was their increase last year?
I believe it was two percent.
Is this budgeted into our budget next, for next year already?
It is.
Questions? Roll call.
Brenda Simmons.
Yeah.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
No.
Roger Mahew.
No.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Item seven J, Resolution to Approve General Appropriations for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-four. This resolution is sponsored by the Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. The Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act requires that each local unit of government annually adopt a balanced budget for all required funds. This budget is presumed to fund those activities of the county mandated by law at a serviceable level. Once adopted, no expenditures may be incurred in excess of the individual adopted budgets without first amending the budget pursuit to the budgetary procedures established by the Board of Commissioners. A position allocation list included with the budget limits the number of permanent employees who can be employed in all departments, offices, and the courts. Certain positions contained in the position allocation list are only approved contingent upon the county receiving the budget revenues. If such anticipated outside funding is not received, those positions will be removed from the approved position allocation list. In addition, positions vacated during the fiscal year shall not be filled prior to review and approval of the Board of Commissioners. In addition to the budget, Michigan statute also requires a general appropriations resolution to set forth the total number of mills of ad valorem property taxes to be levied and the purposes for which that millage is to be levied. That was a mouthful.
Did good. I'll make the motion to approve the resolution.
I just have a question.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Does anybody support it?
I'll, I'll support it.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Discussion?
All right, just because this is something I haven't seen before. Is this just kind of a standard?
Do you want to explain, Tim?
I'm sorry.
I just tried. This is something every year that we do, that we go over to approve?
This is.
I mean, I understand what the concept is. I'm just wondering, is there anything else on this, uh, just a standard?
It is. You'll find that most of the language is similar to what's been approved in the last few years, with the exception of that statement read by the chair concerning replacing positions that are vacated during the year. So that, that's new. Uh, also, the millage rates have been adjusted according to various heavily rollback rules and, and other rules that the utilization director follows. So we made sure that those millage rates are what they need to be.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if in the coming election, if there are any, we're going to have an election in November, but if we do, and there's a proposal on there for millage, uh, that would increase something, let's say, uh, well, I think last year, we actually had nine-one-one go through a millage. So then we had to have a supplement resolution after the election to increase that collection for the December roll. Uh, but otherwise, it's, it is very standard. A lot of the language you see in there is just quoting statutes about how we have to split up certain funds provided by the state.
This motion is approved. I'm sorry, Commissioner Wiltie. This motion is approving the budget that was presented to us on Monday, correct?
It is.
We have no November election.
So there won't be any change.
This is approval of the budget. Any further discussion?
Um, I think we have some people here tonight that want to talk to us about the budget, don't we?
We, right now, we, we, this, this motion's on the floor. They had an opportunity during public comment, the first one, to talk about agenda items. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
No.
Roger Mahew.
No.
Charles Wiltie.
No.
Brenda Simmons.
No.
Item seven K, Resolution to Approve Routine Contracts for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-four. This resolution is sponsored by the Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. The Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act requires that each local unit of government annually adopt a balanced budget for all required funds. This budget is presumed to fund those act, oh geez, I just read that one.
Yeah.
Sorry, seven K. Resolution to Approve Routine Contracts for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-four. This resolution is sponsored by the Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. The County Purchasing Procedures Policy requires that all contracts over five thousand be formally approved by the Board of Commissioners. Numerous contracts are routine, are routine continuations of existing contracts. This resolution would authorize approval and payment of certain listed contracts as budgeted.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Simmons.
Yeah.
Support from Commissioner Mahew. Further discussion? Roll, roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
Item eight A, we have claims. Claims total is a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and seventeen cents. That looks very low.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Simmons.
I'll second.
Support Commissioner Wiltie. I believe you two reviewed claims.
Yes, we did.
You have the floor.
I, I had, uh, some questions this morning and I came back in today and, uh, got those clarified and there's, there's no problems with any of the claims that I can see. My answers were, um, were answered completely and I'm satisfied with those answers and I need to pay those claims.
Do you have any specific questions?
Uh, no, I had, um, just one with the contract. I didn't realize it was that we paid every month instead of just paying out flat rate. So I had a question about, so I was pleasantly surprised that we pay it monthly instead of all, all one time. So that was, that was good. So, yeah, I had some.
Which one is that?
Uh, our, um, counselor that we have on, um.
Partners in, oh, we do, we so soon.
Yeah, well, well, I, I, I saw there, there was a, a charge on there and I thought it was extravagant, but what it was, was paying for the contract. We pay every month towards that contract and stay in, in the full-blown thing.
What specific contract are you talking about?
That we had with our counselors.
Through like partners and teachers through the courts or our legal counsel?
Our legal counsel.
Okay, so I, legal counsel. That's what I was, okay.
Our legal counsel. We got too many councils, I think.
I'm saying council, I'm sorry. Counsel, any, any, did you, did you, uh, have anything to add to that, Commissioner Wiltie?
We're on the same page. She was going, she got the question answered, so. Let's.
Hey, roll call vote.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item nine, Unfinished Business. Commissioners.
Yeah, you got a budget that you got to have done by, by Saturday night, so I think it's unfinished.
Okay, discussion, um, Tim, does that have to, I guess, can you clarify, um, what happens if a, if a budget is not approved by the end of the month, what, what goes into next week?
Uh, lights go off and the doors get locked.
Okay.
Literally, I mean, there's, there's no, no authority to pay anything.
I want a clarification on that. Okay, Commissioners, what, what did, uh, discussion? Commissioner Simmons?
On the discussion about the budget, um, I think, I think there can be, we're short of money, that's, that's for sure, and, and our dollar doesn't buy as much as it did a few years back, buys a lot less. But prices keep going up, I think we still make some more cuts there. You know, there are some individuals that work the forty hour weeks. I think they should be put back to thirty five hour weeks like everybody else in this county. Um, also there's lots of revenues that's not collected anymore that we used to collect and that's a big problem when you see, um, a downturn in, a significant downturn in half a million dollars, that's quite a loss. So, um, and I think, I think, and I just think, I just think they could give us some more cuts before I make any final decisions on this budget.
Commissioner Mahew.
I just think that we shouldn't take it all off of one place. I mean, it should be fair across the whole thing, and I know they told me this before my time, that this was cut and that was cut, but it's, it should be fair to everybody. That's just one of my beliefs.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Mr. Wiltsey.
Uh, I've made it very clear for the sustainability of our county, I mean, hard decisions have to be made. And it's, it's clear that that has to happen. I know some people have been still working right up to the last minute here to look into some other options, and I'd like to hear those. Um, but I do understand that we do have to make some really hard decisions, uh, in order to make this budget right. That's where I'm at right now.
Commissioner Scott?
Nope, I'm just here to listen.
Uh, I, I'm gonna be honest here, I guess, um, I think, Commissioner Scott?
I'm sorry.
Do you have something else you wanted to add? Okay, thank you. Um, I think this budget's been being discussed for three months uh, to bring us up to this point up to Monday. Um, up till today with still more information that, that we haven't seen yet, but, but might be on the table, but might not be on the table um, is extremely disappointing. Um, I, I agree, I think there was a lot more cuts that should have been brought to us way before today. These cuts should have included, um, more people working thirty five hours versus people losing their jobs. Um, should have cut the overtime significantly. Um, should have been doing more things like washing our cars, looking at food, all the departments. Um, I think we've asked over the last three weeks for department head and elected officials to dig deep, look at each line item, any penny, any dime, anywhere that they could cut. Um, and unfortunately, when we brought something, it was kind of like a bargain. You do this if you give us this, um, I, I'm shocked that we're, we're down to eight jobs. That's something that I wasn't comfortable saying yes to on Monday, I'm still not comfortable when I feel like other, other places could have been cut. Um, I know cuts are coming. Um, but I, I just don't feel like every department or department head, elected official, um, did what we asked them to do. I don't know how these departments are run, I don't, it's not my job to know how they're run, um, it's their job. I, I just, it's really disappointing to me that we're up here at the last minute right now, um, obviously not, nor is near on the same page. So I guess if anybody else has any information that again, I wish was brought to us way before tonight, um, I would like them to come up. Yes, Commissioner Simmons?
I just want to comment. Um, you know, we have this, uh, property tax limitations now and, uh, basically with, with Headley, it is really kind of set up for, for all communities, all municipalities, not just us. An unsustainable municipal finance system. I mean, it depends on the, on how the property values fluctuate, but the Headley can all, the, our, our millage can always go down. But once the situation changes, it can never go up. To me, that's not sustainable, I don't know how you can su- sustain any municipality under a system like that. And, and that's at the state level, you know, but the, the voters in the state of Michigan voted for it. And he- here we are. But I think that law needs to be changed. Um, so at least we can sustain financially as it is right now. I don't know how we can, how we can does for, uh, this thing for Mister, for Mister Booth at equalization. Uh, we are now down one point one mill. And, and if we, if Headley wouldn't have had that rolled back, that would be our situation there, we'd have, we, that would bring in over a million dollars. And, um, that's what we're short, isn't it?
It, it's remarkably close.
Yep, so we have to make cuts somewhere. Everybody needs to, I guess you call it step up the plate. And anything that can be cut, um, or smaller hours or be able to obtain more funds somehow, some way. We all need to be able to, um, all of us in the county, all the elected officials, all the people that work in offices, step up the plate and help make this happen. Because, um, with the Headley, we, we cannot sustain the way it is right now, we have to make cuts because the money is not there. That's all I have to say.
Here.
Okay.
Here, I'm gonna pass.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
For the floor.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, you got two things here. The, the first thing weighing us is the state laws, is we have to have a state, we have to have a budget balanced to present to the state. The second thing is, is starting the first of month and the first of the year, it's a, the budget is a fluid document, we can change it then, we can make a cut, we can make cuts on Monday. If you find more cuts, you can make more cuts on Monday, you find more revenue, you could add it on Monday. You can do it every day next year. The, the thing right now is we gotta send something to the state that's balanced. Okay? Next week, you, you just, your budget process is every day. If there's something that needs to be taken out, then you can do it any, any meeting. And if you find revenue like grants and things like that, you put that in, we vote on it all the time, we just voted to, to accept the grant tonight. That's in addition to the budget. I mean, first, the first line of business tonight is we got to send something to the state, or it's like Tim says, we're turning off the lights. We're hearing this on the national stage right now. You turn on the news and right now they're, they're trying to keep the government running. And it's a, it's the same thing, uh, on a smaller scale. That's what we gotta do. So, uh, we can't, we can't adjourn. I don't wanna adjourn a meeting until we have a balanced budget to send to the state of Michigan, so that we're sta- we're good with them. I don't want the state of Michigan coming in here Monday and taking over because we can't seem to get our acting in gear.
Can I say something?
Sure, Commissioner Wiltsey.
So, to go along with that, you know, as we move forward, and, and I agree, the last thing I wanna do is see lights shut off, we, we cannot do that. We absolutely cannot do that, we have to leave here tonight uh, with a direction, that direction is make the best possible decisions we can make. Help this county to continue to grow and prosper. Again, we have extremely hard decisions that we have to make, and we're gonna have to make some. But one thing we can do, it's like Commissioner Scott said, you know, next week, something comes up, something works in our favor, we can prove that the numbers are there. We can always amend our budget. So it's not like we're married to it.
Correct.
Yeah, you come next week, you don't even have to do all the things you said you're gonna do tonight. You're just sending something to the state saying that we, we figured on doing this. We could have sent a budget based on the Gladwin idea a month ago, and they would have been satisfied with that, and then we would have changed it since.
Tim, can you add to that? Is that factual?
Uh, as far as adopting a budget tonight and then amending it on Monday, yes.
I don't disagree with that, but that wasn't the statement that was.
And what was?
Well, if we accepted the Gladwin deal, sent it in September first, and if we would have approved it because we didn't know the outcome. We, we had an assumption, if we sent it in September first, there's nothing says, yeah, just send it in on the thirtieth. You send it in, you can send a, a, an approved budget in August to the state. And if the conditions change, then you gotta change.
Yeah, that wasn't the assumption that I was looking for clarification on. It was that we can send a budget in tonight with no plans of, of making the changes that were stated on there, which is what the first thing that you said.
Yeah, okay.
So is that indeed true?
Well, if you pass this budget as it's presented, you are in effect telling me here are some things that need to be done. And as I've said to you since the day I interviewed, if you tell me to do something, you can count on it getting done, so that would be, I think, a risky thing to do because there are procedures that we have to go through to make some of these things happen. Uh, come, uh, well, not Monday, the, the following week because of the timing in our union contracts, those things are gonna start in motion. You can always stop them. One, uh, so if it's not too late, let's say everything, I say some of these layoffs are, are potentially on November first because we've got to provide notice, so you would have up until November first as a board to say, stop. We have another idea, we have other, whatever, uh, you can do that, but the clock's ticking and it's ticking even louder than it is tonight.
Sheriff, under sheriff, do you guys have anything? No, yes?
Well, I have, uh, answers unfortunately, I know we're working on things. Uh, my only input would be, you know, I don't disagree with as far as gonna change on Monday, or it'll change when we we put numbers in some of the additional ideas that are cropping up. Uh, the only other thing I guess I bring to the table, and we just got word that Gladwin did it. Do we look at doing, is it possible to do that three months continuation? So these can to, I mean, it, it is pushing it down and going further into debt, but.
Gladwin did what? Can you clarify?
My understanding is they've done a continuation budget.
Oh.
For three months, but again, they've got a millage that's gonna be answered. We're just looking at.
We did that a couple of years ago. Yeah.
Just for the whole year.
I remember.
Point of conversation.
I remember that, it's a nasty meeting. So I, I guess I was, I didn't, uh, which I apologize for, I guess I didn't realize, and I'm sure it was stated, that if we vote on this budget tonight, the layoffs will start, uh, uh, November first.
Right, we have notification requirements and that, that's built into the proposal that you've seen here. Um, but it starts in motion, so the notices go and that, that obviously puts our employees on notice, but also sends the message, if we don't have another plan within that period, um, you know, they have to happen just to keep the budget balanced.
Were you guys aware of that?
Um, so this cut's gonna be include those eight people plus the position, we're not gonna refill and some, and some, for some other things that we've got in this budget, right?
Right now, it, 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 it has eight people that are involved with layoff, there's one position that we're not filling.
Right.
Uh, it's also, you know, part of the big picture.
Yep.
The other, the other, uh, cuts that we talked about.
Yeah, so, um, if the situation changes in the middle of October, that could all change.
It could. And, you know, you don't have to wait for a regular meeting to do it, you could call a special meeting, uh, yeah, so literally it's up to that last second, you could have, uh, you know, something, some adjustment that you make that would, you know, maybe make a difference.
And for the discussion?
I think we still need to continue talking about this. Even, even though, e- even we pass the budget, we still have to continue to talk about this because it will be next year.
Well then, maybe I guess passing.
Twenty five.
I'm sorry, were you done? I apologize.
I'm sorry.
No, it's my, um, I guess maybe if this is passed, maybe this takes the pressure off of us. It, it gives you guys a new, it gives everybody a new deadline, uh, thoughts on that? They got till eleven one to come up with revenues or, or something. That's correct, even with the union contracts, that nothing?
That's following the formulas in the union contracts.
Yes.
Do you need a super majority or majority vote to, uh, pass this village, or pass this?
Attorney's on the, uh, Zoom call, my, uh, understanding is just a majority, but I stand to be corrected.
Don?
Ma'am Chairman.
Don, can you hear, yep, there, I can see you. Do you need a, a majority or super majority to pass a budget?
Pass a budget, um, I apologize, I've never been asked that question, but I, to the best of my knowledge, just a majority. I've never come across a super majority, uh, for a budget vote.
Commissioner Simmons?
Uh, the last time I was a county commissioner, it was a super majority, but that was changed, the commissioners changed that to just a majority, so as far as I know, it's just a majority. And that.
If I can ask Commissioner Simmons, was that in your rules, or if you said the commissioner's name?
No, it was, it was the law, if, if the, if it is mentioned at a commissioner meeting to reduce it to a, a majority versus a super majority, yes, it can be done. It can be, it can be voted on, then if it's mentioned, then the next time, they can vote on it and say, yes, it would just be a majority.
Fair. Yep.
Commissioner Simmons, or Commissioner Scott?
You, you brought up the year that we changed to, we, we voted for continuation, that was a simple majority, if you remember.
I remember that night very, very well.
So that was just a simple majority there.
Yep.
There was a question, I think, at that time of a super majority versus a majority, yes, sir.
Just for my other half that I do where you bring the issue back to the table, do you not need four to one vote to bring it back to the table in order for reconsider?
That, that's for motions that are tabled. This, this is not a tabled item.
No, but I just, it's already been voted upon, so if you.
We have voted, we only have a motion in a second right now.
No, we voted to, we voted it down, we voted.
Oh.
General appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty four was voted down.
Uh, that might be, to bring the same motion back.
You gotta bring it back to the table, but.
I have your rules in front of me and I will find out.
Mm-hmm, I, I just know that at the city.
Good point.
If we have to bring something, there's reconsideration, you gotta bring it back to the table. Bringing it back to the table, you're gonna have to have.
I guess before we, we, nothing else from, from you guys? Is there any elected officials or department heads that, that would like to talk about the budget? Anybody on the phone? Department heads or elected officials?
Have your answer.
Go ahead.
Rule ten point three point three, a motion to reconsider shall be in order on any question the board has decided, except for a motion to clear the floor. There are multiple motions, so we don't need to clear the floor. The motion to reconsider shall be in order only on the same day as the vote to be reconsidered was taken. The motion to reconsider shall be made only by a member who voted with the prevailing side. So this was one affirmative, four negatives, so the prevailing side would be negative, those four commissioners would need to make the motion.
Any further discussion?
I have to be quiet right now.
Please.
The other side of that.
Yep, we're aware of that.
I'll make the motion.
Motion from Commissioner Wiltsey. To bring this resolution to approve general appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty four back to the floor.
Yes, just bring him back to the floor, right?
Yes.
I'll second it, I just wanna make sure. I'll say it. I just wanna make sure. This is such a touchy situation, I I wanna make sure there's no doubt.
So right now we have resolution to approve general appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We have a motion to bring it back to the floor. We have to vote on that, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Roll call vote to bring it back to the floor. Charles Wilsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David. Yes. Roger Mahew.
No.
Now, is there any discussion on this, I guess? Do I ask for a motion to approve this? Anybody like to make an emotion to approve this?
I could make a motion to approve it now.
You can.
Back on. But I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
And motion Commissioner Scott? Support from Commissioner Wilsey? Discussion. Commissioner Simmons.
And we could change this, right? Not concrete.
Can change, uh, the budget at any regular meeting where you are allowed to take votes.
Some people tell me that the elected officials want you to do their budget, you can't change it. That's all. Who states, is that right?
It's not a true statement.
I didn't think it was. I just was clarifying.
Guys, one person at a time.
Sorry.
I I I I personally sticking with my first statement. I I appreciate now there's extra time for changes, extra time for layoffs. So again, I'm very disappointed that we're at this, this, this point. Making the changes that have made, been made, positions have been added over the last year since I originally started, and and I don't feel like we're a whole lot better off. Down to the last minute, trying to make a very, very tough tough decisions that is gonna impact a lot of people. A lot of people.
Like I said before, you can come right in there next week, we can come right up here. Somebody can make the motion to scrap the whole. Anything you want to do in that motion, anything you wanna do in that budget, scrap the whole thing. Vote on it. And next year at this time, Willie can sit here and figure out how to get out of a deeper hole. And you can be just as surprised that we're there.
Any further asks, Commissioner Simmons?
Second, we can't scrap this whole budget. How are we gonna keep the, keep the lights turned on?
Boy, you can have that part.
Commissioner Scott, Commissioner Simmons has a floor.
I'm asking our county comptroller this question.
I'm gonna have to ask you to repeat the question because I don't understand it.
Well, I think I do.
Okay.
If we, if we just say the heck with this budget and we just get rid of it. That means we don't, we can't spend any money. All we can do is amend this budget. We can't just say it's gone.
In in theory, you could, you could.
Could what?
Make a motion to make the whole budget gone, but then you're shutting off the lights again if you do that.
That's what I needed to know.
But you you have the 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 authority, the five commissioners have the authority to, you know, prove it as is, to amend it, to delete everything. But just understand that extreme option does have consequences, and I mean that would be immediate.
I think amendments would be better than just doing away with it, like like you, your comment was.
All I mean Brenda is Monday, we could, we can call a special meeting Monday, or you can wait for the second meeting in the month, next month. And you can, you can make the motion that says, we're not gonna lay out anybody off this year. And if you get a support and you get another vote, you you don't, you don't lay anybody off, okay? You can do that. I'll go in and ask them if you can do that.
I know I can do that, but.
You can do that then. Then, then we could just kick this can down the road farther. But tonight, we can get the, we can get the state, the contra, uh, the budget that they they need by the weekend. They can get that. And then next, next month, you can just kick the can farther down the road if you want. It's, you can do that. I'm giving you an out right now.
I think let's, I think an another thing is, is why I'm sitting here struggling with this so bad is is, again, I, we asked, I specifically asked, uh, at the meeting on Monday, if, if there was any, anybody that was forty hours that could go down to thirty-five hours. Looking at that cost savings is about fifty-eight hundred bucks. It 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 might, my math is correct, or are pretty darn close to that. And there are some individuals that are still forty hours that could go down to thirty-five, or we could have at least asked for union, uh, approval. Um, you know, you add a few of those up and that's one job that could have been saved. I I just very frustrated and disappointed with all, how all of this is, has happened or not happened, I guess. Commissioner Simmons.
Yes, the only reason I asked that question was because Commissioner Scott said we could just do away with the whole budget. That was the only reason I asked that question.
That's fair.
I understand the rest of the process. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion?
No.
Are you ready to call a vote?
Any more discussions?
Any, Commissioner Wilsey, do you have anything?
Um, no.
Roll call vote. Brenda Simmons.
Good to be first.
Last, last, first and last are bad spots to be in.
I'm totally random. I'm sorry, I already had my marks marked out.
Start clock.
Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Simmons.
No more discussion?
No more discussion.
Yeah, vote no.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David. No. Roger Mahew.
No.
Charles Wilsey.
Yes.
You guys wanna meet tomorrow?
Um, but we can't. What do we gotta do then? Tomorrow, if we meet tomorrow to bring this back up on the table? Now, we're past that one day rule. Same day rule, right? What do we gotta have tomorrow to bring this back up on the table?
Tomorrow would be a whole new agenda, a whole new agenda items. One of them hopefully would be to approve a budget. Uh, and that's, that's a whole new meeting, so you're.
So we're not got to vote to bring it back on the table?
Nothing's been tabled, so no.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
So I think the decision the three have just made is the absolute worst possible decision we can make at this time. I understand you're trying to prove a point.
I never said a word. I came right through.
A point. But the possibility of our county closing is absolutely one hundred percent unacceptable and ridiculous. We have a lot of hardworking people.
Lord, you're boy.
That work for this county. I'm fine. I can talk at this level. I I'm just floored. I am absolutely floored by this.
And that's, that's fine.
Unbelievable. Unbelievable.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
I am, I am for that. Um, I know there are some other cuts that could be made, and I am for it because they didn't step up to the plate. And yeah, and that's where I stand.
Commissioner Mahew.
You can kick the can for ten years, but it's still ain't gonna do nothing. You gotta get after it and get it fixed. One way or another.
So what are you suggesting?
I mean, if the state comes in, I understand it's bad, but there's places that's had it before, and they're coming out of it. I don't know what's gonna happen if the state comes in. But you've both told me this isn't, you run this like a business. It would fold.
Can I make another comment?
Commissioner Wilsey.
Yes, and we're making cuts. We're making the hard decisions. We're making very hard decisions. It's not gonna happen overnight.
I guess I'm gonna bring something to the table. What about I can defer for one month? Can this be done, Tim, a one-month continuation of our current budget? I'm not saying this decision is correct.
So the, the way that would look, if you're gonna do it for one month, is that you would approve a budget that's equal to one twelfth of the current year's budget to get you through October. Um, I'll also say maybe perhaps out of turn, I I don't recommend that, yeah, because at the end of October, the situation will be worse and more reductions will need to be made to keep the budget balanced. Or additional revenue fund.
I guess I should have asked that question before that vote. How much more reduction could you, can you foresee?
Well, at least another twelfth, uh, because you're continuing a budget with everything status quo, and we know we can't afford to do that.
Comments? We need to make a decision, guys.
Well, I agree with what Tim's saying right now, because if we do have continuing, then it'd be the, um, beginning of December before you can um, put into effect any layoffs instead of beginning in November. So it would really be two additional months versus one additional month. When you think about it.
What would you like to do, Commissioner Simmons?
Well, I don't wanna turn off the lights. I I wish people would have stepped up the plate. They should have stepped up the plate i- in my mind. Cause I feel like they're gonna, they're gonna have those cuts anyways, and we can amend this budget. They're gonna have those cuts anyways. So, um, as long as this budget could be amended, um, then let's go with it right now, and then we can have those layoffs beginning um, one November. Is it one November? Yes, one November, thirty October, thirty-first October. And then we can move on from from there. And I still think there's gonna be more cuts that are coming. We just don't have the money.
I I was hoping out of all of this, I was hoping that we could do a one month, and and I I should have asked. Um, I was hoping we could do a one-month continuation. And we could see everybody give a little. Um, I understand that that, that would put us a little bit further in the hole, and and I guess I didn't realize as far as a layoffs that that would put them back.
Yep.
Is that true?
It is, um, you know, unless you made another motion uh, to do something differently. I mean, it would literally continue the status quo, uh, until that ex, uh, continuation date ran out.
So if you did it for thirty days, would you put us October one till October thirty-one? And then the layoffs would start when?
Well, again, unless you gave an earlier date, then we would still have to have the twenty-one day notice to the employees. Uh, so that's putting us close to the end of November, uh, before it could actually take place.
So if we did a one-month continuation and and could, would we put in there now? Would that do anything if we put in there, the layoffs would still begin, um, November first?
Um, it could, but then I would rhetorically ask, why would you do that when the budget that's on the table does that already?
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Simmons. I thought you had a question.
I have a comment. Um, I don't like passing the budget the way it is, but to get the ball rolling in the right direction. We have no choice but to pass the budget now. Otherwise, we're gonna be stagnant in this whole process. And it can be amended. I think we need to sit at, sit at the table. I would like to put a, um, a budget committee together comprised of major players that know the budget and wanna talk about major players, and I have to ask them, did they even consider it? Would be, um, the one that pays all the bills, which is Tracy, and the one that takes in all the money, which is Treasure. And someone that has a lot of history with this. And a commissioner and Mr. Dolehanny. And I think we need to start it immediately after we pass this budget. Because there will be more cuts next year if something is not done. But I think you need to get the smart people that know, that know, um, the money's in and out. And the administrator, of course, who is is, um, guiding us through this. I just think we need a budget committee, as I foresee that, cause there isn't any more ARPA money left. None. This is it. This is the last. Am I correct?
Correct on what? Well, you can put ARPA money in the budget.
No, no, no. I'm talking about what has been planned.
The only thing that's been planned, uh, in the budget is the software purchase for the prosecuting attorney. It's a seventy-five thousand. Well, there is that too. But the only thing that is new that was added as we've gone through this budget process was the seventy-five thousand dollars for the prosecutor's software.
No, but what I'm talking about is the money that's been transferred in every year. It's been the same amount every year.
Right.
For four years. This is the last year. This is the last budget.
That's, this is the last year that we committed to doing it. Now, you do have funds still in ARPA, I mean, I'm not suggesting you do this, but theoretically you could commit more. Uh, but right now, uh, we're sticking to the plan from four years ago, whatever it was, that, uh, five hundred thousand went in literally for lost revenue, and then the additional seventy-five thousand for the prosecuting attorney software. That's it.
This does agree to the seventy-five thousand to the prosecuting software, correct?
It does.
Yeah, I know that. Um, cause I, I mean, I saw that, but, um, we cannot, we cannot keep shoving money in there, cause that money's gonna be gone. It's not going to be there. And the tax revolving fund is diminished significantly, and I don't expect that to grow anytime soon. So we have to do something to control our expenditures. Or we have to do something that can increase our revenues. Those are the things that I would expect this budget committee, if they were in place, that we all work, all we work toward. I'd pass it, I would pass this budget and then start working on the, on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget now.
Treasure, can you give? I'm sorry. Can you give me some input? Do you have anything to add to this?
I would recommend that you stay away from revolving fund. The economy is terrible. It's the worst inflation we've seen. I don't wanna see the revolving fund depleted and us no longer being self-funded. That's my recommendation, and I also recommend that you adopt a budget before leaving this table tonight.
Why we're still talking? Anything, anything, anything else from department heads or elected officials? Anything?
I think a budget committee is the answer. Just from talking with the other elected officials. Feel like that's the best answer.
It's a budget committee. Any department heads or elected officials on the phone? Don, do you have anything to add to this? Our legal?
Uh, no, I, it, I'm understanding you're gonna create a special, a special committee?
A budget committee.
Right, and it sounded like, uh, it would be one commissioner and and some, uh, and Tim and perhaps some other county employee.
I think they had talked about two commissioners, a treasurer, um.
Suggest that you have this as an agenda item at next week's committee of the whole. Give you some time to think about who you'd wanna sit on that committee. And what its purpose is, I'll give it marching orders, whatever you need to do, but, uh, to make a rash decision tonight, I'm afraid you might leave somebody out that you wanted with mood. Uh, and I also say you don't need to appoint me to your committee. I come with the building, so I will be at all your meetings. Uh, I, as your staff person, so it. Uh, I, it's your staff person, so it'll help you maybe keep your committee numbers. Well, maybe you'll end up at a position for somebody else, so just for what it's worth.
Commissioner Simmons.
I just wanted to make sure you were at our meeting. That's why I wanted you on the committee, but if you come with the building, we'll take you.
Anything else?
I'd just like to add that. I agree with the budget committee. I think that could be very valuable, but again, we don't have a lot of time. I mean, I'm still optimistic. That's a possibility. Again, there's some really smart people out here, and I know we've, we're down to the last hour. I wish it wouldn't have took, took that. But I'm still optimistic the fact that we may have some things come to us that would be beneficial, and we maybe will have to make as major. I'm still optimistic for that, but with that being said, time is of the essence. So I think this budget committee, I like some of the, I really like the people that Commissioner Simmons brought up. I think they'd be great for that committee. I understand what Tim is saying about our next meeting, but that's, that's in a whole nother week from today. I would like to be able to say, I'd like to be on that committee, and I'd like to start Monday morning. But I don't wanna leave anybody else either out, but we don't have a lot of time.
I, I think with these, with these, given a little extra time for these layoffs for November first, I, you know, maybe this does take this, this out of our hands and puts it back in, into theirs, which is where it, it really falls. I don't like this. I haven't liked this, but I, I don't see an alternative. I was hoping for a one-month continuation to give these guys a little bit more time. Time to make these hard decisions, but it sounds like that, that could just dig us any, e- even further. So. Yes, Commissioner Simmons?
We're gonna need a motion to bring him back on the floor, aren't we?
You do.
Now, I have to come from the three of you.
I make a motion, bring it back to the floor.
We have a motion? I'll support it. I'll make a motion to put this back. Resolution to approve general appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
Do you wanna vote on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call out.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew. Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve general appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
We have a motion with support. Any further discussion? I don't like this. I don't like this at all, but I, I, I don't want, I don't, I don't foresee a different option, and this takes this out of our hands and puts it in theirs. So hopefully some, uh, I, I don't wanna see eight loss. I don't wanna see some of the cuts that are in there, but uh, you have a little bit of time to fix this. So please, please do. Any further discussion? Roll call out.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
No.
Travis Wiltzy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Item ten, Administrator slash Controller report.
We do have, um, two-page report on the iPads. Three things I wanted to mention tonight. The first one, and I apologize if I've already mentioned this, but I don't think I have, uh, Isabella County hosted a twelve-county regional webinar, uh, a couple of weeks ago to talk about uh, what's being now called materials management plans. Uh, this is, in effect, the solid waste management plans that were originally developed, I think in the early nineteen nineties, maybe it's all in the the state's gonna require us, uh, to complete a new plan with an emphasis on material recovery. In other words, recycling. And the state will, because this is a state mandate, will be funding those studies. What Isabella County's proposing, and, um, hasn't created anything yet for you to look at, to vote on, but they'd like to create this twelve-county regional plan. Uh, so in other words, these twelve counties pooling their funds to meet all these different state guidelines, um, which, uh, they believe will then, um, add incentive for the state to even put more money into the twelve-county region. Now, Isabella County's interest in this is they have a material recovery facility that's a place that, uh, takes in the recyclables, uh, packages them up for, uh, sale on the markets. And they need the, the capacity the twelve counties would provide. So I'm gonna continue to monitor this, um, but it would be kind of a relief to know, you know, there's a regional plan that covers us. You don't need to uh, hire anybody to come in and do a plan for the county that could potentially be, uh, covered on this regional basis. So I'll keep you posted on this as, as things progress. I've not yet seen any announcement from the state about what's been allocated for Ogawal County and when this needs to begin. Uh, they've been pushing it back. It seems like every thirty days. It'll be thirty days from now. It'll be thirty days from now. I know it's coming because they passed a, a law at the end of last year that said we're gonna do this, so we're just simply waiting for them to drop the green flag, tell us what kind of funding we're talking about, and then we'll be back here at the table to talk about some of these regional ideas uh, that have come up. Uh, the only other thing I wanna mention is that we did have our healthcare coalition meeting on Monday. This is the meeting that we hold with all of our employee representatives to go over, uh, what our experience has been with our health insurance utilization in the past year. Look at rates for the coming year, and then look at the plans that we offer and decide whether or not we wanna make some changes. Now, with Mesa, it literally is about a four-page um, single-spaced list of different options they have for health insurance. It's very, very impressive, to say the least. Uh, last year, considerable time was taken, uh, to determine what plans that we wanted to put in front of our employees, mostly because we were offered uh, two more plans. So we have four different options that we offer employees to choose from now. Mesa's introduced a fifth option. They call it Balance Plus, and the primary difference is it's a high deductible, uh, plan that also has, as one of its components, is the supplemental accident, critical illness, and hospital indemnity plans. Um, the Mesa rep that was here with us is going to act on our behalf to ask for an exception to allow us to add that fifth plan for our employees to choose from. Uh, so if that happens, uh, during open enrollment between November thirteenth and December first, our employees will be able to go online, select the plan they want. And this one might be one that, uh, particularly for our younger employees, uh, might be one that's even more suitable uh, to them. So it, hopefully we'll offer another option. And we'll talk on Thursday about the PA one fifty-two recommendation, and no surprise, the committee said, yes, we need to stick with the hard cap option, uh, which we've already talked about here, so it'll just be a formality, but because of the statute, the way it's written, you will be asked to pass a resolution to confirm that. Well, that's, uh, the rest of the things you can read, um, later, uh, but those are two main points I wanted to bring out.
Questions, comments?
No question. How high is that deductible?
I'm, they'd asked me yesterday, I could have told you. It is high. It is, uh, in the I believe around the six thousand dollar range, somewhere. It's definitely a high deductible plan. Uh, but the idea is that particularly with the, uh, uh, hospital of accident and critical illness supplements, that even though there's a high deductible, there's potential that for those supplemental plans to help pay for some of the uh, expense the employee would see, and the Mesa rep had some, uh, examples, real life examples, if somebody broke their leg or if there was a long-term, um, uh, illness that you're dealing with, would show the differences. Uh, we will have the rep come out here, uh, during the open enrollment period to meet with employees one-on-one to talk about those plans, and then you can, uh, help them decide whether or not, uh, a high deductible plan is for them. Uh, otherwise, the four plans that we have, they're nearly evenly split in terms of employees who have signed up for them, so we, we're pretty confident we've got, uh, uh, the four that are most suited to our particular, uh, employee base.
Any other questions? Item eleven, elected officials and department head reports. Clerk?
Um, Brett Gildner, Ogama County Clerk. I just have to report that um, I am working on the early voting consolidation grant that is going to be turned in tomorrow. And that is all I have to report.
Any other elected officials, department heads? Anybody on the phone? Elected official or department heads? Matters from the floor? Commissioners, any? Motion for adoption. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Simmons.
Well, I pretty much just been trying to chase the budget for the last three weeks. I think I've questioned almost everybody in the county that works for the county. And, um, here we are. So I haven't haven't been to, I missed my transport meeting. I missed my airport meeting. I missed my parks and rec meeting. I miss just chasing this budget.
Mr. Mahew.
My townships are not the richest ones, I guess. They're, uh, disliked accounting. Complaining about trash. People are trying to get a deal on trash. So. And, and I mean, if that's any, any sign, they ain't got a lot of money.
Understand.
Commissioner Scott.
Uh, I attended Westbridge City Meeting. Uh, pretty uneventful, but a resident there on Fairview, Fairview Road came in and talked about the noise the trucks make coming down the Fairview Road. Uh, city manager said he'd look into it. Uh, they reviewed some striping bids for parking lots. The airport meeting, uh, we had insurance bids out. We had two, two companies that had been uh, covering the different, uh, uh, giving different coverages. So we, uh, we reviewed all the bids and split them up, uh, splitting coverages again over the two agencies. One agency gained a little bit more than the other. Uh, we reviewed some brush grinding bids, both, uh, services provided and machine rentals. We chose to rent from Carlton Company a machine and have one of our employees run it. We're expanding the land clearing operations, ten more acres. And they had some test equipment out on airstrip this, this week, uh, for the runway inspection. The road commission, uh, pretty busy meeting this week, uh, they had a public hearing on the road abandonment. And closed that, then went ahead and voted to, uh, sell that abandoned portion to, uh, to the man that uh, applied for the abandonment. That was out there on Wrightford Trail. I talked about it in past meetings. And then, uh, they had twenty-two residents from the Island Lake area up in the north end of the county, in Mr. Mahew's area. They had a spokesman, and he, um, did a very nice job explaining, uh, their road. They have a private drive, and for years, the county maintained it. Well, the county found out that you can't bump, you can't maintain private roads with public money. So they had to write him a letter and tell him that we gotta stop maintaining your road. So the board tried to tell him that, you know, just get a private company and, and do it. They have a, they even pay an assessment to the township um, for it. I don't know, it's but they had one spokesman. It went along very well. It was not, it looked like a lynch mob, but it was one spokesman. They did very well, very good job. Uh, then there was two residents from Mills Township talking about some road conditions over on East Third Street. They had some pictures to show and stuff like that, so. And then they approved their twenty-three, twenty-four budget for budget and construction schedule. And their revenues next year is nine million, one hundred and four thousand, five hundred and sixteen thousand. And since they had a little bit left over, they're starting with thirteen million.
Wow.
Well, they have a fun battle.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Good.
Yep, that's all. Other than that, I was not able to go to Ogama Township, cause we had a pleasure meeting.
Commissioner Wiltzy?
About two weeks ago, I gave a lot of my reports, but I have a few things. Uh, this past Tuesday night, um, the steering committee for Northeast uh, Michigan Housing Coalition, we had a town hall meeting via Zoom. We had almost a hundred people attending in that, so we're pretty excited to see, um, what Ms. is gonna come back with, and how much money our Northeast, uh, eleven counties will receive. So, uh, again, I'm staying close and tight with that. Uh, it could, uh, be very beneficial for our county when it comes to huge, uh, demand of housing that we, that we have. Uh, transit, uh, construction out there is, is, has started for the new pole barn. All the trees have been cleared, so uh, site work has been done. Um, we did get all of the fascian software done on the building, which looks really, really nice. Um, we're getting some, three big talks here regarding, um, regarding the rates and how that currently, the process of that, and maybe making some changes, and you might be seeing some more advertising on the buses. Uh, EMS, uh, we approved the budget. One big, big, big issue there, and I guess it's that monster for a long time is overtime. And we have, uh, Justin, our new administrator there, uh, working really hard, and that's gonna be one of the items he's gonna work on. And then I'd also just like to, uh, thank Kelly. First time I've been here, she's always been very helpful to me, and she will be missed. Uh, I wish her the best of luck.
I haven't attended, um, any because of commissioners. Tomorrow I have a Saginaw Valley Career Crest for, uh, Michigan Works, which is a huge event down at the, uh, all of the gymnasium down there. I can't think of the name right now. Yeah, the Ryder Center down there. It's, it's a huge event for Michigan Works. Uh, I think it's sophomores. Sophomore and juniors for high schoolers, um, from all around are traveling down, and, um, it's a really big event, so I am traveling down to that tomorrow. Michigan Works is very, very, very proud of that event. Yes, ma'am.
My comments, um, Commissioner, uh, Wiltzy. Do you have a chance yet to go out there and see how far those trees are cut back or no?
Yeah, I was out there this morning. Yeah, I'll talk with.
Okay, thanks. I just wanna know. I just thought they were a little close.
Yeah. I'll look into it for more.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, general public comments. A general public comment in the room. Come on out. You got three minutes. State your name.
Oh, I don't need that much time. Most of y'all know me, because I work for the Herald. I just wanna let everybody know that, uh, this is my last meeting, my last day at the Herald, October third. So, yeah. That's it. If anybody has any questions, you guys can ask me after the meeting, cause these are recorded. I'm not gonna say much else.
Thank you. Any public comment on the phone? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion with support to adjourn. All in favor, say yes. Oppose motion adjourned at six fifty-eight.